I call to order this regular meeting with the Board of Education on October 14th at 7:00 PM. Alright, we don't have anybody here to lead us for the flag, so if we could all stand and face the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, our mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you. Role call.
Sarah's absent with notice. Jessica?
Here.
Kai?
Here.
Kristi?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
And I am present. You have a form.
Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. Just looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have the approval of the consent agenda. Excuse me. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
We have a couple new hires, though they weren't able to be here. Donald Russ Driver, Jennifer Dixon, Assistant Cook at Richmond Middle School, Stacy Finn, and Dawn Waller, both special education paraprofessors. Dawn Waller replaces Margie Soldin, who took the secretarial position, and then based on some needs that we have, Stacy will serve that capacity. And then we have a resignation from a Title I paraprofessional at the middle school, Shannon Schmeisler. I believe you approved her on the 23rd meeting. Change of heart. No questions regarding the accounts.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then next up, we have our closed session for the students' discipline hearing. Looking for a motion?
I surrender to Section 8B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, and upon the request of the student's parent or guardian, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the discipline of a student whose identity is known to the Board as student 101419.
Support.
Thank you. We'll do a role call vote.
You have to ask if there's any discussion first.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a role call. Chris?
Aye.
Kai?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Myself, I say aye, and motion carries. We'll go into closed session. We'll be returning to vote. We are now back into closed session. Next up, we have our presentations, starting with the Millali Elementary School. Just a motion.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking the time to hear a little bit about student achievement data at Lee Elementary. First we want to look at are the most recent M-Step scores. These were the students who took the test last school year. So for third grade in ELA, Lee Elementary, the students were 43.8% proficient or advanced. And then I put the percentages for the county and the state. So as you can see, we're for third grade ELA, slightly above county and below the state average. And then in math, Lee Elementary, 46.7% of the students were proficient or advanced. And that was the exact same as the state and a little bit lower than the county. Looking at third grade ELA, these are just the M-Step scores over the last five years. So these are different students. This is just third grade, kind of show the trend of third grade students. See, kind of had a peak here in 2016 and '17, and then kind of a little bit lower. If you look at, these are the percentages. Third grade math, we're about as high as we have been throughout the last five years. Looking at fourth grade M-Step for ELA, this is one of our celebrations. So we was at 49.4%, which was well above the county and well above the state average. One thing we did focus on a lot last year was our literacy with the coaches, literacy coaches from the ISD. They came out and observed teachers and then did some training throughout the course of the year. One thing that's county initiative this year is second grade teachers and myself, we are attending the ISD for literacy training. Next year, it will be first grade, the year after that's kindergarten. This is across the county, different cohorts. So we designed for the fall cohort, so we are getting that information right away. We've been to three trainings so far. Our fourth one is next week, and there'll be a total of seven trainings where we'll go through all the different factors and the different strategies for balanced literacy. In math, Lee Elementary, last year, fourth grade students were at 40.7%, which was above the county average and a little bit below state average. And we'll get five-year trend data. These are the different fourth grade throughout the last five years. So you can see we're continuing to increase as we look at the percent. And then for math, kind of same thing, pretty close to last year, once again, the trend has been increasing over the last couple of years. Any questions about M-Step before I move on to our NWEA data? Now looking at the NWA. The data I want to look at is what percentile the students are in. The higher the percentile, the better. With NWEA data, it shows that students that are in the 60th percentile or higher, they're more likely to be proficient on the M-Step when they take it. The average percentile is 50%. So ideally, we want, as all of our students give a 50th percentile or higher, try to get those students moving towards a 60th percentile. So when you look at the kindergarten numbers, this is the first time kindergarten students have ever taken the NWEA. They took this the second week of school, starting the second week of school. So this is just first-time data, so it'll be interesting to see how those numbers adjust. So I included the high. Those students were above the 80th percentile. The high average, and this is terminology right from NWEA, high average, 61% to 80%. So ideally, we want students to be that 60th percentile and higher. And then the average percentile, NWEA puts it at 41 to 60%. So these are the percentages. First grade reading, staying with the theme of reading. So you can see the number of students in the high, and the 80th percentile or higher is 23%, 21% high average, and 21% in the average. Second grade reading, very similar to first grade, 22% in the high, 27% in the high average, and then 18% in the average percentile. And then last group, third grade reading, 19%, 15%, and 24%. So once again, these are second week of school students who just get back to school and testing. So it'll be interesting to see in the winter time, after they gone through no half of a year of school, how those percentages will increase, be positive they will increase. Now looking at math, kindergarten students, once again, 7% students for their very first time. And what we see with some of the kindergarten students, first time, is they're at a desktop computer with a mouse and everything. They're touching the screen, trying to figure out how to actually use a desktop computer. Those that iPads, not nothing that they can touch and anything like that. So that's part of the test process, too, is getting the students to understand how to take the test. First grade math, though pretty impressive, 32% of students are already in the 80th percentile or higher. High average, 22%, and then average, 15%. Second grade math, 36% are high, 27% in the high average range, and then average is 12%. So we see a large number of students, second grade math, in the high, the high average. In the third grade math, 7% in the 80th percentile or greater, 21% in the high average, and 19% in the average. Now with NWA, language usage, let's start in second grade. So their kindergarten and first grade do not take the language test, just not developmentally ready for that. So second grade language, high, 8% of graders, 13%, high average, 20%, and then the average is 10%. And then for third grade, 13%, 22%, 18%, as we look at those percentiles also.
Just a reminder for the Board, when you're talking percentiles, 50th percentile is average. So when you compare students of like, their peers across the nation, an average student is at the 50th percentile. So when you look at ours, we've got in this particular case, 35 students that are scoring above the average percentile. So 50th percentile is not bad. It's kind of where all the other kids fall.
Yes, not like getting a 50% on a test.
Yes, that's...
Any questions? I know at the elementary level, we don't have as many testing, as much tests at the secondary, the middle school, the high school. So you want to focus on the M-Step and the NWA. Any questions at this time?
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed third grade dropped a lot, the percentage up, how many were in the higher percentage? Is that because of...
Are you looking at third grade math?
Third grade math.
Yeah.
Is there something that was added to third grade that made it harder for them?
Third grade's, the curriculum gets a lot more difficult, and NWA kind of reflects that curriculum. And once again, this is their first test that they took for the school year. So it'll be interesting to kind of see how they do the next. But yes, if you look at second grade math with 36 percentile, 36% in the 80th percentile or higher, first grade. So yeah, third grade's one of those. And when any time students taking tests, you always look at the environment, how did they come? And third grade is, they have their laptops for the first time in third grade, and third grade students take the test in their classroom. So it's a little bit of a shift, because kindergarten, first and second grade, all take the test in their computer lab, because we want the students to, you know, get to using the mouse, the computer, make sure that we have that. And then third grade, with their technology, they do use their laptops. So that could be something different than just taking a test on a laptop. That's something we'll definitely look at as we look at the winter time, what those percentages look like. So if we analyze that data, we can see what we need to...
I'm sure it gets a little hard.
Yep.
Excuse me, Mr. Kooshen, do the students in third grade still get the test, does this test read to them? Or, because I know in the lower grades, it's an audit test as well.
Starting second grade's not read to them anymore. So just kindergarten, first grade, the test is read to them electronically at home time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are we sure second grade, the test isn't read to them? Test is not read to them in second grade?
Okay. That's the first year it is.
Okay.
Thank you. Up next, we have the middle school. Mr. Castle?
Okay. In the middle school, grades five through eight, we have three tests. Everyone takes NWA, and then fifth grade through seventh grade take M-Step. And the PSAT last year was the first year for eighth grade. They, I'm gonna go over them. In fifth grade, we have four assessments. Our fifth graders take social studies, science, third year mathematics, and English. And third year for science, because that's the third year since they've been changing the work with the next generation of science standards. Sixth grade, two assessments, mathematics and English. Seventh grade, also two assessments, mathematics and English. And in eighth grade, we have four assessments, social studies, again, the science was the third year. Last year, there was no M-Step for mathematics or English. There was, but it wasn't mandatory that we had to take it. We didn't, because it didn't account towards accountability. And then mathematics and language arts and English, we took the PSAT. Last year, our results, when we looked at how we did compared to the ISD and the state, in each grade level, we have fifth, sixth, seventh, and then eighth. And I'll talk a little bit about eighth in a second with a different test. In fifth grade, we were behind state in mathematics. And we were above in reading, and one point behind the state. And in social studies, we were above both, the state and ISD. In sixth grade, we were above both in math. And ELA, we were tied and above. And in seventh grade, we were at 40%. And in the seventh, for the state and ISD, we were above. And ELA, we were above both. And if you remember, over the last few years, you know, for us to be in two back-to-back grade levels above the state and ISD and math, that's a trend that we want to continue, that has not been there. And then eighth graders, PSAT, ELA, we were at 63, ISD was at 63, and state was at 62. And then math, we were 31, 41, and 41. Now, what's encouraging to us with this is because as seventh graders, our math in the ELA test, we were quite a bit behind the ISD and the state averages. So our kids stepped up and closed the gap more in a tougher test, different test, two totally different tests. We had Emily McElroy out from the ISD a couple weeks ago. She's one of their data gurus. And we were talking about, you know, the M-Step and these tests, their night and day, PSAT and M-Step. And the PSAT has more rigor in it, to get them ready for college. And it's more meaningful of a test, because it tells them more where they're at as an eighth grader to get ready for the junior year. And for us to have tied here at the 63% proficient, we were pretty excited. Also, with 31, might not look good, because we are still behind. But we definitely closed the gap compared to a different test the year before, that the test has a little more rigor in it. We were pretty happy, not satisfied, but happy. And in social studies, we were ahead of the state and then behind the ISD. Science, for the third year now, they don't give us results. So we're still piloting and figuring out how they want that score, and how they want that to come out for availability reasons. Okay. This is all, every test for the ISD, fifth grade through eighth grade. We are the blue line. This is the average of every single M-Step test for the last five years. And we're the blue, and we were outperforming the ISD and the state. And 2017, '18, we did not have a good year, and we have some theories. I'll tell you one of them inside. And then this year, this past year, we bounced back. And so we're gonna get back up in the years, or this trend will keep going up. That's every test, math and language arts and social studies for grades five to eight. This is ELA. Again, we are outperforming. And in 17, '18, we dipped, and now we're back on that track to be above the state and county, which is obviously always our goal, and that's for all the ELA tests. Math, we were, and we've been working quite a bit on math, as you know. We're yellow, so we're here, we're on the right path, ahead of the ISD. This was the state, and we can say here, and now we're back up to almost tied in that 17, '18 school year. My theory partly is we have, we have smaller sample size compared to obviously the state and the ISD. If you have 100 students, it doesn't take that many students to shift your percentages. This takes a few. And this year, and we didn't like it, although we don't make the rules, this year was the first year that if a student is on, for them to be accountable to your school, they have to be on three rosters. And it used to be the winter count, the fall count, and then winter count again. So almost two years that they need your student. But the rule change was, is the fall count, the winter count, and then the M-Step testing roster was the third roster. So if you got a brand-new four-count day from August to last week, they counted towards your proficiency. And we've had good and bad, so, but that with, when you have a smaller sample size, we believe that has a lot to do with that difference of the community. These are not out yet. Sometime this week, I know Mr. Wong was in touch with the state, asking when these are gonna be public. And he said sometime this week. Last year, we were at a three. We don't expect to be any worse than a three. And as much of a dip as we made or had last year, we were still considered a three. So this year, with us doing better, we don't expect to go backwards. When we met with Emily from the ISD, and we do put a lot of stock in the NWA, because its norms haven't changed since 2015, so it's been a consistent test. So if you grow, if you're in sixth grade, and you grow three, you grow three RASH units, the RIT score. If you grow three spaces, and you're an eighth grader and you grow three, those are equivalent growths. So the test is consistent over time from grade level to grade level. And our goal here is, here's where they come in in the fall, and we look at where we are in the national average, and in our gap with that national average, and then here's where we are in the spring. And with the margin of error, we all met our growth targets. And then you'll see, what we want, these national norm gaps to get smaller. So negative 5.3 to a negative 4, negative 0.4, sorry, that's a good gain. That gap is shrinking. Negative, we're 3, 3.7 behind the national RIT. Now we're 1.7 above the national, so that was a grade improvement. So I pointed out that the M-Step for fifth grade, we were about 10, 10 points behind the state average. But when we look at a test that hasn't changed over time, and that's more reliable, in our opinion, and Emily would agree with us, we went from a negative 5.3 behind the national norm to a negative 0.4. So that's a pretty good gain to knock down and close that gap to the average that Mr. Wong explained when Mr. Kooshen was up here. Same thing here, negative 6.5 to a 1.3, a negative 1.6 to a 4, a 1.3 to a 1.3, so that was a level. And then negative 4.1 to a negative 0.4, 0.2 to a negative 0.9, this, we're going a little bit the wrong direction here. Same here. Here, negative 2.2 to 2.5, 2.2, negative 0.5, so a little bit of a wrong direction here. And also here, we went a little bit the wrong direction for language usage. And if you'll notice that these scores, it's harder to get, to close this gap the higher you get, because you're usually ceiling out with the NWA. So you're gonna show less growth the older and the higher scores you get. For example, language usage, at the beginning of the year, we were 0.5 above the national norm. And then in the spring, we were negative 0.7 to a 0.2. We were there, but we're still below. Here, even though we went backwards, 2.10, 5 to 2.16, we're still above it, although we went backwards. Let's go if that explains that. And this is just the visual of kind of what I just explained, of NWA mathematics, all of our grades. Reading, the growth over a year. The language usage is where we did go backwards over time. Breaking down our NWA growth with the margin of error I talked about, and that right-hand column on the sheet with all the data on it. MOE means margin of error. In reading, we're at 76, language usage 72, math 76, and all three of those add up. We're at 75% of our students reading their growth targets. And before, if you have, what we're doing is, we're continuously breaking down our NWA data, seeing where our holes are. You know, fifth grade, we'll talk to fourth and sixth. Now, fourth ability makes it a lot easier. So we'll talk grade level off the grade level behind. We'll also talk within grade levels to see if our classes are similar, and where our gaps are in the curricular area. The M-Step, we do break it down, believe it or not. Social studies gives us the most information. It gives us the most standards, like, for example, the fifth grade M-Step for social studies grades, third and fourth grade standards. There's a lot of Michigan history on it, which is mostly third grade standard. And those are on our fifth grade tests. So we'll break that down, and over time, we've been able to see, okay, we need to get economics, because that's covered in the spring of the third grade. And fifth grade teachers have done a great job of breaking that down. M-Step, they don't give us a lot of information, the data, or the breakdown that we have. NWA does. Mr. Castle and I were disappointed to hear. PSAT and SAT gives fantastic data analysis. It's absolutely some of the best data that I've ever seen, down to the standard that we're supposed to be teaching. But they're not gonna, they're starting out releasing that now, that's accountability testing. We were excited for home. Questions?
With the PSAT that the eighth grade take, and forgive me if I wasn't aware that we do that. So that's like just another extra practice leading to high school.
Yeah, but accounts sorts our accountability for the building.
For the building.
Yes. See, there's a PSAT eight, there's a PSAT nine, and 10 as well.
Yeah, I knew nine and 10, but I didn't know eight.
Those don't count towards accountability. Those are technically practice.
Those are practice, right.
This is as well, and it's the same as the ninth grade test.
Okay.
But accounts sorts the building accountability. Sorry last year.
I didn't know that. Okay. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the ELA school. Mr. Castle?
Okay, so I'm here to speak on the high school data from the straight passing in 2019. And we started out with just some numbers, just to give you an idea of what our students go through. And this is just for our juniors last year. We had 119 juniors take the test. They were, so with 130,000, they took it to the state of Michigan. And then almost 1 million students took the SAT on the school day of 2019. So we're looking at this compared to almost a million other students. Our students spent thousands of hours of study, and so I see you get a test, too. There she is.
That's very true.
That's all just her. It's about a four-hour test that consists of 154 questions. And as you can see here in a second, we're very happy with our results. And these results are due not only to our students, their parents, and also our wonderful staff that really took in the statement, "Every minute counts" last year. So we're gonna start with our SAT. For those of you that aren't familiar with the SAT, it's a two-part test. It's E-R-W, which is evidence-based, redo, and writing, and mathematics. Students are given a score in both areas, both 800 possible, so a total possible score of 1,600, and a minimum score of 400. And so additional tests that we take in the high school, we take the M-Step. We take the M-step, science, as Mr. Hartal alluded to, there is no release science data, so you won't see any of that. We take the social studies M-step, the NWBA, the ACT work keys. We take the PSAT nine and the PSAT 10. And that is all the golf sheets by the time they're done testing in the second week of April. Here's our results. The national average for the 2019 SAT was 973. So 973 is the national average. The state of Michigan average, which is much more useful for us to compare to, was 984. And Richmond High School came in at a 1,008. So we're very happy that we exceeded that over the national and the state averages for our SAT last year. Our RHS was 35 points higher than the national average and 24 points higher than our state of Michigan average. And that is a national representation of us being much higher than the state and the national average. So go light blue. Here's our benchmark results from last year. So they break down this test and they have the benchmarks. Percentage of students that met or exceeded the ERW in math and ERW is the bulk of the total test. Nationally, 31% of the kids met both of those benchmarks. State of Michigan was 34, so EA Michigan. But then the blue doubles, there we are, 38%, exceeding again the national and state averages. Math, the just ERW, so this is the English reading and writing portion. Nationally, much higher, you'll see that students nationwide do better in English than they do in math for the most part. State of Michigan's 55, so again, we're above the national average. And then again, the blue doubles, there we are, exceeding above both the state and national average. Mathematics, you can see much lower, 33%. That's a nationwide issue that, you know, every school in America is having right now. State of Michigan, again, we're a little bit better, 36%. And then there we are, again, exceeding both the state and national averages at 40%. So we're very happy with our SAT results last year. So again, that's us, we are the blue. Then the orange is the state and the grayish is the national average, so we exceed them in all areas. Except for the last one on the right, which is a good one, we don't want to exceed the math because that's a math no benchmarks. So all the way to the right, you don't want to be beat. And that just summarizes where we sat compared to the state and national averages. So drilling down even a little bit closer because it's okay to compare it to the national averages and the state averages, but how do we do it against Macomb County, the people that are in our backyard and our front yards here? Macomb County average was 975. And again, there we are at 1,008. Technically, we're 1,07.7, but we're rounding it up, so if you see that. So we were 33 points higher than Macomb County as far as our total score. ERW, the average score there was 488, and we were 509, so again, plus 21. Mathematics was 487, and we were 499, so again, plus 2 there. So even in the subcategories, we are significantly higher than the other schools in Macomb County average twice. One of our highlights for the SAT is 12.6% of the Richmond High School juniors, which are now our senior class, had SAT above the 85th percentile, which is considered elite. So we had 15 students with a score of 1240 or higher, which is rare air for the students to score. We had two students score above 1,400, which is exceptional. And then we had one that is exceptionally exceptional, in the top half of 1% in the nation. We're into the PSAT 10. So again, PSAT 10 is the same format as the SAT. The score range is a little bit lower, so 1520 is the highest you can get on the PSAT 10. Same format, ERW and mathematics. Here's this class of 2021 performance. We were 4.5% higher than the Macomb County average for composite score, so again, higher than the Macomb County average. 8.3 points higher in the ERW. And here's where we have to work with it. We were 3.9 points lower than the Macomb County average for mathematics. So it's not all. We do have that one area that we're focusing on, trying to make sure that we get this year juniors to increase that mathematics score. There they are again, the blue and orange. That's just a graphical representation of the same thing there. We're the bottom ones in the light blue, the nationals at the top, and then the state in the yellow. So you can see the red there is where it's scored up to do. Same thing with the PSAT nine, we had 108 ninth grader take that test. Score range is 240 to 1,440. So a lot of times the ninth and 10th graders get the scores and they get worried because their score's a lot lower than their 11th grade brothers or sisters. Well, it's supposed to be, there's not as many points possible, so, you know, just keep that in mind when you're looking at the raw scores. So this year's sophomore class was 17.4% or points higher than the Macomb County average for composite score. So again, 17.4 points, enough to see that that's a pretty significant average higher. 4.2, 14.2 points higher for ERW. And then we tricked without to 3.2 points higher than the average for math. But again, above average in all three areas. So you can see there, the future of Richmond High School is bright. Our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade classes have scored very well. Just got some data from the eighth graders that became eighth graders a couple weeks ago, so we're starting to break down freshman class's data right now. This is something that we just put together, we actually looked at this in our professional development today, and I know that's impossible to see at the big screen, but we're looking at trends in three-year data. So we're taking, for example, this is, if you go from this square to this square to this square, you can follow them as they became freshmen, to sophomores, to juniors, to see whether or not they increase that gap in the areas, or they decrease the gap or stay the same. So we're not happy with just having a class that's way above the average. We still need to move. So just because they came in 20 points higher doesn't mean they stay 20 points higher. We want to push it from 25 to 30 to 40. So we're going to start looking at the trends. And again, this is the first class that we have three years worth of data for, is this year's senior class. Then we took the 2019 M-step, and this was the social studies M-step, because again, they don't release the science scores. So this is Macomb County on the top, Richmond High School underneath. If you add up the proficient and advanced proficiency, we are above the Macomb County average for social studies proficiency. Our NWA data, we're still pulling together for the high school. I've been pulling that, looking at it, analyzing it. For us, the PSAT and SAT data is much more useful just because it tests in a lot more subcategories for generalization. So NWA is something that we're working on right now, having our kids take a look at. One of the big things to see in the next one is we're looking at the possible brain drain that our kids get during the summertime. So we're looking at their spring scores and then comparing it to the fall scores, see how much they fell off during the summer, see if we can start to implement summer reading programs or math additive programs. Because we focus a lot on that for our little kids, and it's a big deal, but we're starting to realize that some hard-boiled kids have those same gaps. They go off, they hit their summer jobs, they go off and do their thing, and some of that information's leaking out of their precious little heads. So the future, we'll look at how to keep this forward, we'll end it anyway because we're very happy with our test scores. So we're not content with it. We spend time in every professional development looking at these scores, breaking them down, looking at the subcategories and the benchmarks to see how we can continue to move our students forward. We look at trends to decide where and how to allocate our resources because we have a finite amount of resources, and we want to make sure that we're allocating those appropriately and making the best and the most informed decisions. And like I just said, our PBD, our staff is very good at looking at that data and breaking it down, and they're the experts within the content areas. So when I need information on a math question or an English question, I go to them, they're the experts. So they're a great job, they're doing a great job of providing that information. And then again, we are currently looking at NWA all data and trying to figure out ways to get that brain drain rectified. Any questions? Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Wombley with the first reading of the board by the laws and policies.
We have the board policy updates from the spring of 19 and the fall of 19, which is why we have so many. So I'm going to highlight the changes in each policy. So if I go to Bylaw 100 to definition, and we're back at some of the stuff that's marked in yellow is what we've already previously had. Over the, on page six of that policy, the Bylaw, it references to accommodate the absence of a board member due to a military leave, which is a change in some of the guidelines and laws of the state. The optional language was to allow a board member, if they've notified him, to participate remotely. We have done that in the past. It's usually discretionary on the item, there have been some board members who have wanted to participate. I recommend you keep the option as an option for the board to consider. Bylaw 160, closed session. The stuff that is marked and highlighted is already there. Where I want to bring your attention to is letter H. That was a new reason to go into closed session, to consider security planning to address existing threats or potential threats to the safety of students or staff. And a majority is only required to go into closed session for that item. Board policy 1420, this is to put in alignment, I guess our policy back into alignment. You had approved this policy last year at the beginning, when 40% of the evaluation had to be student achievement data. The legislators made a move in, I want to say it's the first week of May, right before evaluations were down, to change it to 30%, but that was a one-year fix. So it puts it back to 40% and it goes, it corrects the policy so that the current policy is in line with the existing law. Policy 1422.01, it's a new policy for a drug-free workforce. This policy was prepared, similar policy guidelines that we have for 3122 and 4122, which would be support staff, but we did not have an administrative policy regarding drug-free workforce. Those are the same options. Policy 1615, this is, it's a new policy regarding tobacco. It's basically, when you read the summaries, we are a tobacco-free campus. That includes grounds, athletic facilities, any school-related events 24/7. It also references the advertising, we don't advertise for tobacco products, et cetera, in this policy. This one's 1650 is dealing with the administrative guidelines. You can see other policies for support staff. Policy 2210 deals with curriculum development. The change here over existing, you'll see a lot of them that are highlighted in your policy, those are our existing policy. The letter A, and now there is a law that requires us to be grade-appropriate instruction on career development in each grade level from kindergarten through 12th grade. We are beginning, working with, just so the board is known, with our technology course, which will eventually evolve into a career development technology class at the elementary school and begin looking at that. We start the EVPs in the sixth grade, seventh grade, thank you, seventh grade, which then we talk about careers and that, but now we're required to put a K, they say quick K-12 program in place. So that's the only change on that one from 2210. On 2265, childcare center and staff, excuse me, 22. There's a policy in here that is reproductive planning and health that should not, oh, no, it is, I'm sorry. Start of board, that's fine. Okay. 2265, childcare staff and volunteers. Last, I believe it was October 1st, there were some changes in the law that required preschool staff particularly to be under a different set of guidelines for fingerprinting and job responsibility. This basically says that we are not allowing volunteers to engage in unsupervised care or instruction unless they have been background checked, et cetera. And if there's any issues of childcare, that's where the building, it's reported to the building principal at that building. And it deals with preschool programs before and after childcare, child or daycare center can drop in programs, which ours are a combination of all of those.
And do we, we don't have any issues there, do we?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The law changed.
No, we are, the law changed and our staff were brought up to date at last year. They all had, many of them had, will get re-fingerprinted under a different system. And that was done last year.
Okay.
We made sure we were in compliance on that one.
Okay.
2414 deals with reproductive health. The only change is the guidelines for sex education guidelines of reproductive health and family establishes, that's no longer available. And so it's being removed from our policy. That's the only change on that. We currently have an abstinence approach, and this course here, so we currently don't, it is operated in the health class, but it's a choice that people make to take that course. But we don't blanket all students to have to take a sex education course or reproductive class. We do the what's required by law for the HIV, AIDS, and with one other, a coronavirus like that. 2628 is state incentives. And 31A, and this is yet to even be finalized, but there is some within the law. Talks about looking at economically disadvantaged students, English language learners, chronic absences of what we report to what's called CEPI, the Center for Educational Performance Standards. Every year we do this, so this is, we report these statistics by law. And so this is updating our policy to align with what the current law says. 3120 is professional staff. Everything marked there is the existing, where I want to bring your attention to. Requirements for teachers in districts receiving title and funds, that was added. It's just basically complies that we have to have a highly qualified teacher in that aspect. Employment of substitutes, which is 3120.04. This reflects the new law, which allows 60 semester hours. It used to be 90 hours, now it's 60 hours. Talks about you can enter into business partnerships, which we've done in the past, such as head your staff or some of the other substitute programs. 3210, this ethic, this policy was revised to include provisions that were recently approved in May of 2019 for the Michigan Code of Educational Ethic, which talks about responsibility of a professional, professional competencies, responsibility to students, the community, the proper use of technology, et cetera. I don't see any concern that that's, A through E is new, basically new adoptions. And you get on to letter M, it just basically says that we're threatening using their position for an improper manner to protect students. 3215 is the use of tobacco staff by professional staff. We talked about earlier the administrative staff, which is 1650. Again, the same type of change. It does address jewels, which you're going to see in the student policy, or vaping devices, 3220, the professional staff evaluation, like the administrator's staff, this now puts us into compliance for the 40% of the legislators' change. And I, I'll be honest, I fully anticipate this being on the ballot, and I'm very attracted to change it again. I don't see this. 4215 talks about the tobacco use for support staff. We don't use it at all on campus, and it references e-cigarettes and jewels, et cetera. 5113.01 is schools of choice within the district. We don't have any options for parents, but we have a policy. We don't have multiple schools that they can choose from, so my recommendation is to remove the policy. There's no choice because we only have one school each. Policy 5113.02 is schools of choice provided by federal law. It's a schools of choice option, and it really just changes, no child left behind, to the new Language Elementary and Secondary Education Act throughout the policy. 5200, attendance deals with students. We accept written statements under confirmation of the absence. I'm going to give us for whether it's single, prolonged, et cetera. The biggest change is on the bottom of page one, it moves the attendance below of 16 now to 18. The rest, it was all in the existing policy with the exception of the very last, that's the next policy. So the rest is all the existing policy, so those marks were already in our policy. 5230 deals with attendance and late arrivals. Again, it talks about, basically the change from our existing policies at the end, that we're requesting a photo identification if someone is not authorized, such as custody, so we know who's picking them up. That's a practice we already use. If someone, they don't recognize it, they're asking for an ID. If they're not on the emergency card, they're calling their parents to make sure it's okay to be with sisters. 5512 deals with tobacco use, tobacco use by students. This is already in our student handbook, but now in terms of, it talks about, we are a, it's a tobacco-free campus. are a, it's a tobacco-free campus, but we aren't going to advertise with references jewels and e-cigarettes and vaping device in the policy, which was absent previously. Policy sixty-three twenty-one, new construction, new school construction renovation. This is a change in the law that said basically, any new construction, school districts must consult those plans with local state emergency responders. So we assume things positive about the bond this coming May, we're going to do those new constructions. At some point in the process, I'll have to consult with Chief Tashke and the Richmond Lennox E. N. H. to make sure, it is a consultation. We still fall under the state auspices of the actual approval of the plans, not local inspectors. But it's a, we wanted input from the police, I guess is the policy.
And that's, that's law?
That's law, that, yes. So that language really is just, it is almost the language of the law, just says we have to consult. It doesn't define what that consult is and so forth and so on. But any of the security improvements, I would, my position, I'd like to have input from them, particularly the reconstruction of the entranceway at the middle school, to make sure we're thinking about all the whole things in the scope of the budget. Sixty-three twenty-five talks about procurement of federal grant funds, trying to make steps for small minority businesses and women business enterprises. Again, it's putting our policy so that it matches what the law requires us to. Everything else is the same in the policy, periodically the ten thousand limit, et cetera. Steel bids, we already do that competitive bid process, right, anything over the certain dollar mark. Crowdfunding, talks about, this is at least in the fundraising, that we're going to make sure that we aren't, make sure I got this, that we're protecting the privacy of our students, especially if we're using a third party for crowdfunding. Give me a second here, I was just refreshing my mind, this was pulled out one minute. Provisions of this policy and related guidelines are prompted recent attention by the state, of the audit of the state, which is the AOS, regarding this evolving fundraiser mechanism. We're using a third party to do fundraising, and it wants to make sure we have protections in place for our students. I'm not aware, again, I'd have to look at if we, what third parties we currently use as a fundraising effort. Typically, the fundraisers we do is our own groups fundraising, but that is one thing that I, if we do use, I want to make sure that the safety mechanisms are in place. System of accounting, you heard this at the audit last year, and you'll hear it probably again when the auditors come on November, I believe November eleventh, they're scheduled to do our final audit for last year's books. GASB eighty-four, all those student activities accounts that we have to account for, all the money that is collected, needs to be documented, excuse me, to make sure it's being paid out as it's been collected. There are going to be a couple of issues that we're going to have to face and resolve as a district. Again, I don't have any, I don't have any direction at this point, but you know, Coca-Cola funds, pitcher funds, and so forth, we're going to have to resolve. Those may have to become general fund revenue, that we're going to have to put an account number in to the budget, how they're being expended now. These are not a direct revenue for a certain specific fundraiser. But we will be evolving and working with the building principals to understand what, how they use those funds. But basically, this puts our policy in compliance with the GASB eighty-four regulations. Seventy-three hundred, disposition of real property, it just adds that the board is going to approve, must approve the terms of sales, lease, or any disposition of real property and all the other stuff, other than the last part, which the board may offer real property for sale at a reasonable method, including working with a real estate broker, soliciting bids or an auction. But all the other pieces are consistent with our policy. Seventy-four thirty-four is using tobacco on premises, again, it's references, again, no tobacco on the campus, this is really more facilities, posting and so forth signage, et cetera. Seventy-four four-zero point zero-three is unmanned aircraft system, these are the drones. Basically, the policy is you need to be a licensed operator of drone, that's Federal Communication Regulation. The chief of police, Tashke, came a certified drone operator, but basically this is saying that we are not operating, we do not allow drones to operate on campus. Particularly, the MHSAA regulations do not allow drones to be operated over our fence, and we could jeopardize if we allowed them our potential participation in MHSAA regulations. So our policy, it's a new policy, is that we do not allow unmanned aircraft systems, School safety, policy eighty-four hundred, there is, puts in the okay-to-say hotline. The law requires us to submit the officials to the state who is to contact, should they get a call to someone, the okay-to-say hotline, and they need to contact a school. The law requires us to, I believe it's twice a year, to submit that information to the state, so they know, and that's what that new legislature, the new language is. Also, eighty-four hundred, it talks about who reports crimes, et cetera, home threat assessments that we have to do, which the law requires us to do a threat assessment by January first of two thousand twenty. We are in the process of working with the county as they're doing a threat assessment for all of our buildings on that aspect. Emergency operation plans, eighty-four oh-two, this is the new policy. Again, by January first of two thousand twenty, each building will have an EOP, Emergency Operation Plan. We, actually, the county has a plan, the temp of each building will be using, and we'll be meeting with each building to make sure their plan is in compliance. It puts a policy in place of what would be in that EOP plan. Eighty-four, I apologize, eighty-four hundred, school safety.
Oh, you did it.
Eighty-four sixty-two, student abuse and neglect. It reports, it just adds the language, and that all other persons employed by the district or mandatory reporters under law will report any student abuses or neglect. The other things that are marked in this policy were part of the existing policy we got already. Food service.
So it's just additional stuff, because we already have to?
The way our policy read was, if any professional member employed was required, there are other people who are not considered professional, but our mandatory reporters, so the policy now encompasses them. Eighty-five hundred, food service, this, the new language talks about if we have a student with a disability, they have a special dietary concern, whether medical or dietary, that the director of food service, in some cases, the business manager, because in this case, the director of food service would be part of it, along with the principal, because there's typically probably a file before health plan, the student. And then as you go on in the policy, this is the existing language, where the director of business and management service and food service annually monitor this food service lunch accounts. And the last one, policy eighty-six forty, transportation of field trips and other districts The district will provide the vehicles for the field trips, what mileage will be charged by the sponsoring. It just clarifies the policy in here. It removes some of the other, that is not a practice that we have in the district. And that's it.
Nice job, thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Reinhart for the donation of bleachers.
Good evening. The athletic department is looking for a grant in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-one cents that would be used to purchase home and away bleachers for the varsity baseball and softball field. This grant would be funded through the Richmond Athletic Club Endowment Fund, which is also a part of our athletic booster club.
So the reason why this is coming to you, because any donations the district receives over a certain dollar value have to be approved and accepted by the board, so we would be asking you at the next meeting to accept the donation of athletic booster, or from the athletic boosters, the baseball and softball bleachers, the total fourteen, a little under fifteen thousand dollars.
So it's not to, because you said something about approving a grant, we're not part of any of that, it's just, we have to be able to say it's okay to accept it.
You're accepting, the grant, or the form that's through four counties' community foundation, was assigned off by the athletic boosters.
Right.
In the foundation, correct if I'm wrong, they're the authorizing how they spend the dollars and make sure it's spent within the guidelines of the foundation.
Right, so we're not involved in any of that. Our job is just to say we accept the donation.
Our only involvement is Mr. Reiner is liaison for the district to the athletic boosters, but he has no say over the dollars, that's the boosters.
And if I remember correctly, there's foundations already there for these bleachers? There's a foundation there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we did that last year.
Donation.
Right.
The submit adds to the board. And these bleachers, as, I don't know if it's Reiner's, I just didn't catch it, but they meet all the regulations for rail, the side rails and everything that we need for the height of these bleachers, so. So for the insurance companies, they'll be, they'll ever be using these rather than some of the others we have been using in the past.
It's very exciting.
Yeah. Thank you. And next, we have our bond update.
Our bond update is somewhat short today. Forty-four hundred cards were mailed out last week. They are, they should be arriving in households for anybody who voted in elections in the last several years. It reminds them of the November fifth election. It also has a survey on there, and anybody can take the survey, will actually go off the school messenger. I'm going to try getting it out tomorrow if I remember how to do all the steps in school messenger. But it asks people what kind of their thoughts and feelings of the bond that they're willing to share, where they heard about the information, trying to see which one of our information campaigns was the most effective in getting the message out there, and so forth, so. Our last piece of information will go home to families the last week of October, which will just again remind them one more time, November election. It also has in there that they can begin voting, or the, excuse me, clerk's office will be open the Saturday prior to the election, from I believe eight to three. I'll double check the timing, it's on the, it's on the website, but that people can vote on Saturday. The new law with absentee voting or allows, requires that the offices be open the weekend prior to the election, to give it.
Each place, each election.
The city of Richmond, the township of Casco, Columbus, Lenox. Thank you.
Except not Casco, because we vote in Columbus.
That'd be Columbus.
So if you're a Casco voter.
You will be able to go in on a Saturday before the election in Castro Valley, if you want to do it by absentee ballot. Other than that, that's all, that's all I have on the bond.
Thank you. Next up, we have public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board, this would be the time to do so. You can come up to the podium, sign in with your name and phone number on the sheet provided, sign a question and answer period. If you have a question you would like to phone call back, we'll definitely get back with you, and you have three minutes to speak. Is there anybody who would like to address the board? Next up, we have Lexi with our student partner.
So just a little overall for all three schools. The parent-teacher conferences went great, and there was a really big turnout, so that was really nice to see. At the Lee School, October first, Jim Shepherd from Shepherd Auto Sales donated and distributed dictionaries to all of the third grade students, so a thank you to him. On October ninth, the Richmond Fire Department visited Lee for their fire prevention program. The next PBIS assembly is the twenty-fifth, and it will be focused on caution and safety. And to end off with the Lee School, they held its, they held their name, huh, sorry, they held their Detroit Red Wings ticket fundraiser, and the staff and students will be attending the game on November eighth. And they were able to sell one hundred and eighty-six tickets and earned them nine hundred and thirty dollars. Moving to the middle school, their fall sports are winding down with only a few weeks left, and their homecoming festivities were very fun. They had the clash of the classes and the end of the week with an assembly. They also registered for auto steam at McComb Community College, and their PTA book fair was a success. To end off the middle school, the PTA sponsored Boo Bash is this Friday, and they always do a great job with that, so that'll be really cool to go to. And lastly, the high school, over forty students volunteered to take the PSAT this Wednesday, and this will help them prepare for the SAT in the spring. And if they score well enough on the PSAT, they may also qualify for a national merit scholarship. College application week went great. The high school had themed days, as well as guest speakers from many colleges come in and talk about the admissions process and to promote their school. They also discussed FAFSA and college transfer credits. DCA had their first meeting, and their group seems to be growing. Mr. Reiner is very excited on, because of this growth, and he's very, also very excited for the opportunities that the students will have because of it. And finally, after much hard work, the Devil's Den is open. Anyone who's interested in Blue Devils apparel or just a quick snack can pop, can pop by whenever it's open during the school day. And that's mostly for students, but also just for anyone wanting to buy their items.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a superintendent and legislative update.
Start with the legislative update. Since our last board meeting, the State of Michigan school aid package was signed into law. We are expected to receive a two hundred and forty dollar per increase per pupil. With that, though, there were several line items in the governor's budget that were vetoed, nearing almost a billion dollars of discretionary funds. Many of those were, had direct impact with school, particularly Richmond. We're losing probably about thirty thousand dollars in some line items that we were scheduled to get, the twenty-five dollars for high school pupil. There's a line item for CTE equipment that we used in previous years to pay for the culinary arts equipment. We've used it for computers for the TV production class, we've used them for, yeah, yeah, that's one of the board meetings, we had a presentation by the, yeah, that equipment was purchased by this grant. So right now, it is not, we aren't scheduled to get that. I do know that the legislators are, and both sides are trying to put together a supplemental budget to reinstate some of those costs, or some of those line items, so it will be a wait and see, and see how we do. Last, it was last week, we had a visit from the state, Sheila Alice, who's deputy superintendent for the State of Michigan. She, we had a long conversation, this is Chad and I, regarding some issues at the state level and procedural stuff, and what their expectations were, so it was a great conversation with her. I toured her on the middle school. I appreciate Mr. Bartels and the middle school staff, who had an opportunity to talk to her and share, she went around to the classroom. She was extremely impressed with our students and staff at the middle school, and some of the stuff that our students have that she doesn't see in other districts. She also was, was very impressive. She sent me this personal thanking note, so I'll just pass it around to the, to the board, to Dr. Lee. Lexi gave you an update on the, what's going on in the district. There's not much more to that. First, end in about three weeks, a little less than three weeks, our end of the first current marking. Just remind your parents to double check the calendar, particularly those programs that are half-day program, because sometimes PM comes at AM, AM doesn't come, so on the calendar outlines when each group comes. With that, what else?
Thank you. Next up, we have any items of interest from the board?
I can't see that far without my glasses, I'm sorry. Mrs. Talto and I had an opportunity to attend the Rob- Mrs. Talto and I had an opportunity to attend the robotics facility at PJ Walbanks. They've donated a large area where there are, I'm going to guess at this number, I think it was nine schools that have robotics teams there that are using the facility. And we had a nice young man tour us from Memphis, and he told us one of the greatest things about that, and that our team can participate in this as well, is just that cross collaboration that happens, and that they can share parts, and they can share ideas and theories and things of that nature. So we're very fortunate that we can partner with, you know, those schools, and then also have that space available to us. They have a full-size rink, rink, I don't know if it's a rink or a ring.
An arena.
Arena, yeah, that's a good word.
I mean, that's a bad word, yeah.
Where they can actually do a full-size mock-up of the challenge that they're going to have when they get to Worlds. And I just think it's a great opportunity for our students to be able to be part of that, so.
Yeah, just, just to be able to practice. And a regulation-sized area for the competition, I think it is huge. Instead of just, you know, being able to do a couple little things here and there, it's very cool. There are a lot of people there.
Yeah, and then I'm, I'm just always so proud to be a Blue Devil, because there was, a lot of our students were out there actually doing the practices and just hustling around, and they had their, you know, Blue Devil shirts on, and it was just, it was a proud moment, yeah, so.
I was able to attend the zoo field trip for the first grade students, and when I stopped in and talked to Ms. Pinsky to sign in in the office, she said there were about ninety parents coming. So that was great to see all those shepherd ones out there, I wanted to thank them for going to that, and the kids had a blast, even though it was a little rainy and cold, we made it through, and it was a great time.
Anything else for our items of interest? All right, next up, we have a couple of action items. The first one is the approval of a bus purchase.
We recently received a settlement payment. If you recall, last spring, we had one of our buses, it was in an accident. We literally just got the settlement payment a couple weeks ago, so we've been waiting. So the settlement payment was for fifty-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The bus, beginning October first, the MSBO, MSBO, bus purchase program began, so you'll see in your backup, three buses that we quoted from three different vendors through the state bid site. The one that we were choosing or recommending is from Midwest Transit for a total of ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. So when you receive your budget amendment, your first budget amendment, you'll see an additional forty thousand dollars of an expense that we did not plan on, because of, we didn't know what the settlement was going to be as well, but this is a bus that we got to replace. The bus that we, that we lost was five years old, and so with the depreciation of the bus, it was fifty-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So that's why it's here, so we can, will take time to read the bus order.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of one bus from Midwest Transit for a total not to exceed ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars from the 2019-2020 general fund budget, which includes using the insurance settlement proceeds as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Margaret?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes. And the next up, we have the motion for the student discipline hearing.
I motion that following a closed session hearing, the board votes to suspend student one zero one four one nine, consistent with the attached documentation.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Angela?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. We are going into closed session. We won't be voting on anything when we return.